Craig Scott.
Here.
Mark Serbrook.
Present.
Brad Vaughn.
Present.
Brandon Newbecker.
Present.
Jenny David. Here. Item two, approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
I have an addition. I had a conversation with Derek Runan today.
Where would you like to put that? Finished?
Yeah, that's fine.
Any other additions or corrections to the agenda? We have a motion?
Motion to accept the agenda with change.
We have a motion from Commissioner Scott with support from Commissioner Serbrook to approve the agenda with the stated changes. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries item 3A, October 6th to 2021 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes.
I reviewed these. But just the only, why didn't we approve these at the last regular meeting?
They weren't ready yet.
Oh, I see. Okay. All right, then I'll make a motion to approve it as presented.
Tagging.
We have a motion from Commissioner Scott with support from Commissioner Vaughn to approve the meeting, the meeting minutes from October 6th, 2021 Committee of the Whole Meeting. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries item 3B, October 14th, 2021 Annual Meeting Minutes.
I reviewed those minutes and I'll make a motion that we accept when it's presented. Support?
We have Commissioner Scott, or excuse me, Commissioner Vaughn with support from Commissioner Serbrook to approve that October 14th, 2021 Minutes. All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries item C, October 14th, 2021 Closed Session Meeting Minutes. I believe those were all.
I have read and reviewed mine. I'll make a motion to accept that present.
I had a question on them, and I'm not sure how do we address this since it's a closed session meeting minutes.
So, process would be to actually go into closed session and discuss the detail of the change unless it's something that's very general, like changing the spelling on a word or something like that. And then we would generate another set of closed minutes for approval at the next meeting that would then approve these minutes. So it's, it's a bit complicated, but it can be done.
Is this? And I just read these. That's why my, is this wording like right here? I just have a question on that wording. Are we sure that that's what was stated or is desired?
Well, the statement's being attributed to an individual here, so it's.
I thought it was more conversation versus 100% sure that that's what that individual wanted. Am I reading into that? Am I?
I understand what you're saying. I would be okay with, with the wording the way it is because it's not. It's just stating the conversation with that.
If you want to, we can just step in the other room just for a minute.
That was my only question. Is this wording? Because I wasn't convinced it was just, it was just being discussed.
Can I add that word? It was discussed?
Again, if there were a motion of the board to do that.
I just wondered that that wording could, could get us in trouble.
Yeah, that would not require a closed session to add a word to that sentence. You wouldn't need it.
Do you see my point there?
Yeah. Just want discussion added.
Yeah, because, yes.
I know what she's talking about.
I asked.
She asked me. Oh, I knew what she was, I knew what she was talking about.
Do you know what I'm talking about?
Going to close.
Yes.
The board can make a motion to add that word to that sentence and be that general, and you'll be okay.
I do. I would like to make the motion.
Do we?
Add the word that we discussed.
I will support.
Get rid of the word like and discussed, to discuss. Any further discussion on that?
Four seconds of that.
I did.
Commissioner Newbecker, you okay with that? All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries item 3D, October 21st, 2021 Committee.
I will.
What?
We're accepting it with that change?
Yeah, we did.
Okay.
October 21st, 2021 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes.
I'll make a motion to accept that presented.
Brad, do you have your closing minutes still?
I just gave it to him.
We have a motion to approve the October 21st, 2021 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes from Commissioner Scott with support from Commissioner Newbecker. Is that correct? All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries item four. Public comment on the, this is public comment on agenda item matters. This is the first of two opportunities for public comment on December 10th. December 10th, 2020, the Board of Commissioners approved Resolution 20-77 F Rules of Procedure that include a structure for public comment. This public comment period is limited to topics that appear on the meeting agenda. A second public comment period appears later in the agenda at which time public statements will be accepted on any manner or issue that is relevant or angem, germane to county government. Persons who wish to address the board are required to comply with the following. One, state your name for the record. Two, speak only to the chairperson. Three, stand behind the podium when speaking. Four, limit comments to three minutes or fewer. And five, follow the direction of the chairperson when speaking. Board rules do not impose restrictions on subject manner. However, failure to follow the direction of the chairperson will result in not being able to talk or being removed from the meeting. The board chairperson reserves the right to sound the gavel when the audience applauds or derides a speaker. On behalf of the Board of Commissioners, we thank you in advance for your compliance with these rules. Is, are there any public comments in the room? And again, this is on agenda items only. Any public comments? Any public comment on the phone? Ready? Any public comment in the room? Did you have a public comment? It's got to be on the agenda items.
Oh.
Okay, you're okay. Any public comment on the phone?
On the phone, what she means is the people on the screen behind you. All those people are watching us.
Any public comment on the phone? Onto item five. We have correspondence from Elder County related to the Open Meetings Act, Ingham County related to support for current emergency orders, Menominee County Open Meetings Act, Meskeen County related to food system initiative grant, and San Alat County related to support for American Rescue Plan. Those correspondence have been received and filed. Item six, we have action on consent calendar. Do you guys have, I have some things that want to be pulled. Do you guys want to do these individually? Do you want to pull these?
I was standing and you want both?
Um, yes.
You want to just do them?
Let's just do them because the veterans I'd like to read. Um, the housing agreement with Ascot County. We got some more information on.
Let's just do them.
Okay. Item seven, a new business, NEMSCA Annual Report. Brad, come on up.
Good evening. I believe this might be my fifth year I've had the pleasure of presenting our annual report to the board, so thank you very much. Good afternoon. My name is Frances Ammali. I am the Communications and Development Director for NEMSCA, your community action agency. And I will be spending a few moments going over the NEMSCA Annual Report. But before I get started with the report, I always like to do a brief overview about community action agencies and NEMSCA in particular. So, community action agencies were created after the Economic Opportunity Act of 1964 was passed. NEMSCA was created actually in August, August 15th to be exact, of 1968. Since then, we have expanded quite a bit. And as of now, we offer about 35 programs in 11 core counties with Ogumaw County being one of those. So what I wanted to do is just spend a few minutes going over the annual report. Now, it's always interesting to me, by the time I get the opportunity to present the annual report to all of the boards across our core county area, it always seems like it was a lifetime ago. Because what I'm presenting to you is fiscal year 2020, which ended on September 30th of 2020, which was over a year ago. So I wanted to take you back in time and think about fiscal year 2020. So when you open up on second page or the first page on the left when you open up, this map shows not only our core county area, but also the extended counties that we touch into. So with all of our programs, like I said, we have 35 programs, at least one program touches into 22 counties, which makes us by far the largest geographically community, community action agency in the state, or one of 29, and probably one of the largest in the whole country, which is pretty significant. Below that is a message from Lisa Bowen, our Executive Director and CEO. And you'll see that she always likes to sit, to kind of give a shout out to all of our community partners that are in this room right now together. So all of the Board of Commissioners, all of our community partners, DHHS, Health Department, elected officials, and just our neighbors. You know, we're all here to try to make a difference, to empower people to live enhanced lives. And she just wants to express her appreciation for that. In 2020, we actually went through a strategic planning process and reevaluated our goals and objectives for the next five years. And one of the things that we did was update our mission statement. So you'll see on the top of page three on the right is our new mission statement, which is to enhance quality of life by empowering individuals and strengthening communities. Listed underneath that is a list of our current board roster. We operate under a tripartite board, meaning that it's divided into thirds. One third is elected officials, and typically and historically, that's always the county commissioner. So we have a county commissioner representing from each of our core county areas that helps govern our agency. The next third is private members or private citizens, and the last third is our consumer members. Consumers either are in the low income bracket or represent people that are low income either by volunteering or by work. I mean, that's pretty significant for community action agencies because we feel like it's important to hear all people's voices when it comes to governing our agencies. So we really appreciate that tripartite breakdown of our board membership. At the bottom, I have human resources, all some statistics regarding fiscal year 2020. And through that fiscal year, we had 916 people on payroll. And at the end, on September 30th, we had 738 employees. When I checked yesterday morning, we had about 750. So you'll see, we're, we're quite a large employer in northeast Michigan. And we spent a lot of hours training and making sure that we're educated on our, on our procedures, on our programs, and how to be the most effective organization that we can. We have almost 30,000 hours of training just in that one year alone. Move on to the next page on the left side with all of the circles. That's where I pull out the numbers. And I say, okay, we do have 30, 35 programs, but how many lives did we actually touch? So you'll see at the top, 2,788 children received our early childhood services programs, which consists of Head Start, Early Head Start, and GSRP. So basically, from the time a woman realizes she's pregnant, all the way up till children enter kindergarten, we are able to offer programs for that age range. We have a school success partnership program where we had over 3,100 youth that's from kindergarten, all the way actually through adult ed in some locations, that were able to have their academic lives enhanced so that they could eventually graduate or get their GED. We had 185,000 plus hours that were donated back to us either via our volunteer programs or through our Head Start program where we have parents that come back and volunteer towards the program, or similar situations like that. You're probably also aware that we do food distributions for people that are low income. So once a month, in all of our core county areas, we provide food to our seniors in the area. And then every three months or quarterly, we do something that's called the T-BAP, which is the emergency food distribution. And that is not age contingent. That could be for all, for anybody that needs food. There is income eligibility, but I am 100% confident that anybody shows up for a box of food, we'll give it to you. It doesn't matter what your income is. We're not going to turn you away. One of the number, the interesting stats that I had our housing program pull out for the first time since I've been doing the annual report is the amount of people that we helped maintain housing. So we have 768 people maintained housing. In other words, prevented them from being homeless in just one fiscal year alone. And that number is getting probably larger and larger. We've hired quite a few staff to come on board to help with making sure that people have housing and that we can prevent or hopefully dissuade foreclosure and eviction and things like that. One other thing that makes NEMSCA unique is that we are also the Region 90 Area Agency on Aging. And that is very unusual for a community action agency. So that makes us pretty special. And what that means is that we receive the funding and then we partner with our local COAs to help administer the programs that are so desperately needed with our seniors and our disabled population in our core county area. And you'll see that over 600,000 seniors maintained or received meals, to that homebound individuals that's regardless of their age, received meals. And then finally, the 12,458 seniors, those are people that maintained being able to live in their home because we have nurses and social workers on staff that go in and provide that home care to prevent nursing home placement. We do have offices right here in Ogumaw County, in the Health Department building on the, on the basement level. We have early Head Start staff that work out of those offices. And across the hall, we have our Aging Division that is our nurses and our social workers and our management that are actually right here in West Branch. And then over there by the outlets, we have our Head Start preschool location as well. To the right is our financial overview. You'll see the breakdown of how we're funded. So this year for fiscal year, we were 62% federally funded, 26% state, and the remaining is local or in-kind. And then below that is the list of expenditures or what, how much money goes into each program. So you'll see, it's very clear on the bar graph that I included, that by far our largest division, of course, is our early childhood services. And that's typically what people usually associate when they hear NEMSCA. It's Head Start preschool. And, and that's because we are so large. You know, like I said, we have 750-ish employees. Out of that, about 600 fall into that, just that, that division alone. So that just really shows the, the large footprint that we have when it comes to early childhood services. And then you'll see the breakdown going, going down the line there. To the right of that real quick, one percentage that we always like to highlight within our agency, one that we're particularly proud of is our low admin percentage. So basically, what that means is that we, 96% of all the funding that comes to us goes back out into the community, or 96 cents on every dollar. That's a very, very high number that goes back out in the programs when you compare it to other nonprofits, and even when you compare it to other community action agencies. So we're really proud of that. Moving on to the next page. If you remember me presenting this from years past, I apologize because I use this quote a lot, but it's one that I think is very powerful. The numbers that I shared with you on the page before, the thousands of people we touched, it's very important to be able to report out to show that big, huge impact that our agency has. However, this is the quote that I'm talking about that I use every year. A good statistic never caused a march on Washington, right? It's the stories. It's the personal lives that we touch every year. And 2020 was no different. So you'll see, I pulled two stories that I just did a brief paragraph of how we helped these individuals. Meet Ken, the story at the bottom. He's a, this is a pretty cool story. Ken was homeless. He was in a homeless shelter. He connected with NEMSCA. NEMSCA started working with him. Before you know it, he was hired by the homeless shelter and he was an employee there. And then he started to work with our family self-sufficiency coordinator. And that person was able to make it success, make him be able to successfully graduate from those courses. So that when he was done, he had over $10,000 that he could put towards escrow for a new house that he could purchase when he was ready. So he went from homeless to employed, working in a, in a temporary home and ready to buy his own home. So it was super cool. To the right is just a little bit of data regarding our care spending. So our agency, along with many other governmental entities, received extra funding doing, because of the COVID-19 pandemic. And so this allowed us to be able to open up and offer additional programs that are not typically within our parameters. So that was really cool. So one thing I want you to look at when you're looking at this page, remember this is fiscal year 2020, so the numbers are very small. So we got this funding at the end of last summer, and I stopped reporting it at the end of September. So it's just a very small little snippet, but we still have this care spending and we can expand it all, all the way through next year. So when I have the privilege to be able to stand here next year and talk about fiscal year 21, it'll have a lot more information regarding the cares output specifically to this county as well. So with that, I would like to open up to see if anybody had any questions or comments regarding the annual report or our agency as a whole. I would be more than happy to be able to answer or clarify any questions this board might have.
Questions, guys?
Very well. All the good work.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Have a good rest of your day.
Thanks.
Item 70, Resolution of Commendation and Recognition of Arlie Lee Morgan as Ogumaw County Veteran of the Year. Wanted to read this resolution. Whereas Arlie Lee Morgan has been designated as the Ogumaw County Veteran of the Year for his exemplary example as a veteran and longtime advocate of veterans' issues. And whereas Arlie Lee Morgan honorably performed military service in the United States Army, and whereas Arlie Lee Morgan has exhibited the highest level of commitment and loyalty to his community and various service organizations by serving in all capacities with the Ogumaw County Veterans Alliance Honor Guard, member of the Veterans of Foreign Wars Post 3775 West Branch Disabled American Veterans Chapter Number 73, West Branch and American Legion Post 103 West Branch, volunteer at the Ogumaw County Veterans Museum, conducted fundraisers for Special Olympics in Area 13, and received Area 13 Coach of the Year, volunteer of the, volunteer for Old News, News Boys of Flint, Michigan, and is an advocate for the Elmer Knopf Learning Center in Flint, along with many other community service activities. And whereas Arlie Lee Morgan has been a great friend to his fellow citizens and veterans. Therefore, be it resolved, the Ogumaw County Board of Commissioners declares Thursday, November 11th, 2021 is Arlie Lee Morgan Day through Ogumaw County. And then there's a letter attached from Jeff. The ceremony will be held Thursday, November 11th at 11:00 AM at the, the Veterans Post at South M30 and Lehman Road.
I'd be honored.
We have a motion from Commissioner Serbrook with support from Commissioner Scott. Is there any discussion on this? Jeff, are you on the phone? Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Hey, yeah, I'm here. I just couldn't get unmuted.
Sorry.
From the Brexton's office.
Do you have anything to add?
No, no, no. I'm in my car. I apologize. I didn't make it home in time to attend the meeting.
Okay. We just read the resolution?
I did hear, yep.
Okay. Roll call vote. Brad Newbecker.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Mark Serbrook.
Yes.
Brad Vaughn.
Yes.
Carries Resolution 6C, Resolution to Approve it, A Collective Bargaining Agreement with Teamsters Local 214 Court Employees Unit.
I, being a part of the negotiating team, I'll make the motion to approve this resolution. Support?
We have a motion from Commissioner Scott with support from Commissioner Serbrook to approve Resolution, A Collective Bargaining Agreement with Teamsters Local 2114 Court Employees Unit. Is there any discussion? Roll call vote. Jenny David.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Mark Serbrook.
Yes.
Brad Vaughn.
Yes.
Brandon Newbecker.
Yes.
Item 7D. Resolution to Approve the 2021 Portment Report Pursuit to Michigan Compiled Law 211.37. Hi.
Hi.
Come on up. Kind of got me freaked out for a minute. Go ahead.
Were there any questions on the portion of the report? Every rule brutally look at before the committee, the whole meeting.
Did anyone have, did anyone reach out to me?
I looked at.
He answered my question. It's the middle hole. The only question I had was. The, the question we had, sent to the attorney, we had never, still have not received a response. This is, in fact, with all these Duttony's reports and Donna, I'm confident in this. Reddick, no questions?
I'd make a motion that the resolution is presented.
I'll second it.
With a motion from Commissioner Serbrook with support from Commissioner Vaughn to approve the 2021 Apportionment Report Pursuit to Michigan Compiled Law 211.37. Getting better. Any further discussion? Roll call vote. Craig Scott.
Yes.
Mark Serbrook.
Yes.
Brad Vaughn.
Yes.
Brandon Newbecker.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Booth.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Resolution 7E, To Approve the Inmate Housing Agreement with Ascot County. Is there anybody, did you want to, I don't, I don't see Mr. Oger here. No, he was going to make a trip up over there. Do you have an update on that? Do you have an update on that?
The numbers in the resolution are updated to reflect negotiation that went on with Ascot County. Each of the years has bumped up $1.
I can motion that the resolution is presented.
Support?
We have a motion from Commissioner Serbrook who supported that. Support from Commissioner Newbecker. Is there a discussion?
I see that we were given a spreadsheet on costs. I see that bond payment is not included like normal.
Can we get our money?
We'll count for that.
If it's not here, it's on the way. It was explained to me, there was a miscommunication in the invoices that went to Ascot. And if they were able to pay, that's all been resolved. So the bill will be brought through.
So Mr. Pearlberg, Pearlberg, at that previous committee of the, I had some statements and questions related to cost. So I reached out to, to Scott, and she had forwarded me the slide from our, I don't know if you guys recall this, from our audit from the, she went all the way back to 2016, I believe.
Yes.
So she, she sent me and I, I tried forwarding and I couldn't. But anyways, it was a jail revenue and expense analysis. Actually, I tried printing it out for you guys to see. For the prisoner cost per day and the average inmate per day. So again, he asked those questions, so I wanted to provide that information. In 2020, the prisoner cost per day was $66.92 and the average inmate per day was 70. In 2019, the prisoner cost per day was $49.64 and the average inmate per day was 81. So I reached out to him and he, he put together this, that I think we all have a copy of, correct? And then I also reached out to, oh gosh, Paul with Crawford County. And I forwarded you his email. I used to talk to him quite frequently before we got Tim. Was always pretty helpful and pretty insightful. I wanted their cost on, where did it go? On their inmates. Because you guys had asked, or Mr. Pearlberg, I believe, asked what surrounding counties were being charged or. And their inmates, because you guys had asked or Mr. Pearlberg, I believe, asked what surrounding counties were we in charge or charging, I guess? And he said that we do not a lot of housing, we do not do a lot of housing, other inmates. So it doesn't sound like they're housing. And then he directed me to Jody, the county administrator at Russ Common, and I believe you had a conversation with her, correct?
I did. Russ Common only leases beds very down to the federal government. Those contracts are pretty lucrative. I'll just say that. And they averaged about $52 a day in their federal contract. They do tend across the state to pay a higher number. When I was at Chippewa County, they were up in that same range, whereas the other counties, we were housing inmates for Moose County there in the neighborhood of, yep, $29 to $35 a night, depending on the numbers they had. And just a quick explanation on the spreadsheet that I handed out, my calculation is a little bit different than what the auditor did. The auditor had the figures for the actual number of inmates that we had per day. But we have a capacity of 144 beds. So we got into that conversation a little bit last time about this. We're gonna have 144 beds in that facility regardless of who we contract with, regardless of the activities of the court. There's always going to be 144 beds there every day of the year. So my calculation is a little bit simpler in that we just take that number of beds and divide that into the actual expenses that we see for, for each of these years. And so you get the cost per bed, per day on that bottom line. Now, I would point out too, the 2021 is an unaudited number. This is what we're showing right now in the general ledger for our expenditures and revenues. For 21 and 22, of course, we just adopted the budget. And you can see there's a jump there and that's pretty common. When we get to the end of the fiscal year, I think you'll see that $36 number reduced closer to that number that we saw for 21, probably, you know, $33.50, something in that range, depending on the revenues and expenses actually work out. Now, Commissioner Scott is correct, the bond is not worked into this. This is just simply the operational cost of the facility. There are a number of other factors we could put into this if we wanted to get into that level of depth. Not only including the bond, but we do have our report that we receive each year on cost allocation. We know that there is some time in the treasurer's office, for instance, that goes into the can be attributed to jail costs. We could calculate those in as well if we wanted to get to that detail. But I think this gives you a pretty good picture of, you know, the direct expenses that we see there every day at the, at the jail and give you an idea of where that falls in comparison to the contract that's before you tonight.
You say bond, and I don't know anything about this process. That's money that we get from them?
No, no.
So.
The bond payment.
Oh, you're talking about the, okay, yeah, that shouldn't be included in that.
Why not? It's a cost of building that jail.
I'm sorry. I thought, I was thinking a person. Okay, huh?
It's 375,000 dollars a year.
Right, but we're gonna have that no matter what. We have to pay that.
Unless we sell the place and pay it off, right? Just to give you.
Right?
Just, just to, just to combat the, the, the idea that we'll always have it. I mean, you know.
Yeah, here you go. I don't disagree. Keep going.
No, I'm, I'm just saying that I think that should be worked into the price. So if I just eliminated, took that 2022 budgeted number and just eliminated that revenue line up there and, and called that a wash with the, for the bond payment, that raises to $42.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
If, if I just eliminate that revenue line at top and call that the wash with the, with the amount and just, just eliminate that line and use the other numbers, that comes to 4219 a day. You know, this is, I, I understand the buildings there and, you know, but this is just like, I'm the hotel manager up the forwards. It takes us 60 rooms to, to make, to make money. Okay? Once we get to 61 rooms, we're making money. So we got 100 rooms, we get to 60, well, now I can start discounting everybody that comes in the door. No.
What else?
Uh-uh. You don't, you're, we're a contractor. If we don't make our money, then why are we doing it?
The counter, the counter argument would be you're gonna have this expense regardless.
I get it. I get it.
And so bringing in this, this revenue from Ascota County is offsetting an expense you're gonna have regardless.
Okay.
Could we?
Get it, but the taxpayers in Ogumah are paying the difference between the bargain that taxpayers of Ascota get.
Could we look outside of Ascota County and try to house? I mean, it sounds like we have available beds. Have we looked outside to try to house other inmates?
Well, the COVID's been kind of restricting us. So we were gonna reach out to Genesee, try to, try to offset some costs there. We haven't done that yet because of the COVID, but we can reach out tomorrow, you know?
Cause I know there was more jails that went up. Saginaw built a fairly large one. I think Alpena did within the last year or two as well. But I was surprised because Mr. Oger had met, had mentioned Crawford was going to start housing as well. And when I got that, that, that response back from Paul, he, he definitely did not indicate that, but. I, I don't know.
Have we reached out to Otsego County? The, I was up there this past week and I saw a whole bunch of jail signs. For them wanting to build a new jail. So maybe they're having an issue.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I, I can get with Oger tomorrow. I'll figure it out.
Wait, any jail signs? They're building a jail?
They wanna build a new jail. They wanna get one approved.
At Seagull's. Okay.
Sheriff and I just thought up today that Alcona's closing their jail, closing it down. And they're saying contract with Ascot County.
I ask it was trying to house.
They're only averaging five inmates a day and their budget was like $800,000. They have to run the jail for financially for them made sense.
What's your sheriff over there? I know him.
In. By Ascot?
Yeah.
Scott.
Yeah, I know him. Okay, I'll, I'll reach out to him. I know him. Just to see a cost. It'd just be interesting to see. Okay, any other discussion? No. Roll call vote.
Mark Serbrook.
Yes.
Ron Vaughn.
Yes.
Brad Newbecker.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Item 7F, Resolution to Approve 2021 Umbrella Renewal. Have anything?
Computer umbrella protection. I'll make the motion to approve the resolution. Support.
We talked about this in detail at the committee of the whole. Commissioner Scott, you made the motion?
Yes.
Commissioner Newbecker, you supported that?
Yeah.
Any further discussion? And this is for three years, correct?
Yes.
Roll call vote.
Ron Vaughn.
Yes.
Brad Newbecker.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Mark Serbrook.
Yes.
Item 7G, Resolution to Approve Antivirus Renewal.
On that same line, I'll make the resolution to approve that, or I'll make the motion to approve that resolution.
Support.
We have a motion from Commissioner Scott with support from Commissioner Serbrook to approve the antivirus renewal resolution. Any discussion? We are going with Great Lakes Technology for three years.
Right. That is discussed.
Yep. Roll call vote.
Brad Newbecker.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Mark Serbrook.
Yes.
Ron Vaughn.
Yes.
Motion approved. Item 7H, Resolution to Approve Administrative Secretary Job Description.
Make a motion to approve the resolution as presented. Let's work.
We have a motion from Commissioner Serbrook with support from Commissioner Newbecker to approve the administrative secretary job description. Any discussion? Thought it was fairly broad, but we discussed that. So. And next with this will come the, pay scale, correct?
Right.
Cause I did not see one.
Right. So that'll be next committee hall, it's processed. So then we'll take the next step at the next committee of the whole, talk about that and then. Talk about next steps.
And did I miss that? And I might have. Was this, did this word, if it was gonna be a part-time or a full-time position?
Yeah, that's a good discussion to be had. There's pros and cons to that, but we, we just at this point wanna get set the foundation. This is, this is what we're gonna do.
Okay. I wanna make sure I didn't miss it, cause I didn't see it. Any other discussion?
No.
We have a, who did that? I don't know. That's what I had done. Okay. Commissioner Serbrook with support from Commissioner Newbecker to approve the administrative secretary job description. Can we get a roll call vote on that?
Jenny David.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Mark Serbrook.
Yes.
Ron Vaughn.
Yes.
Brad Newbecker.
Yes.
Motion approved. Item I, Resolution to Approve the Capital Assessment Management Policy.
Asset.
I'll make a motion to support that resolution.
I'll second that.
We have a motion from Commissioner Newbecker with support from Commissioner Scott to approve the capital asset management policy. Is there any discussion, Mr. Scott?
I looked it over. I, um, is, is the, is the $5,000 threshold, is that to go along with the bidding process?
Part of it. This is a generally accepted practice in the accounting field. They like to cut, cut those depreciation schedules and everything off at the 5,000 mark. Because typically it's not worth the time to capitalize something that's worthless.
And it was departmental inventory control at, under that.
Yes.
And will a method or something like that for the departments to follow?
Yeah, departments, think back to that internal control audit that we did. Departments each received, you know, sometimes a multi-page listing of different internal control policies. These would be among them. So they would deal with that on the department level and then obviously report up from there.
Yeah, I'm good.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Mark Serbrook.
Yes.
Ron Vaughn.
Yes.
Brad Newbecker.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Item 7J, Resolution to Approve Lead Time Donation Policy.
I'd make a motion to approve the resolution as presented. I'll second that.
Good motion from Commissioner Serbrook with support from Commissioner Vaughn to approve the lead time donation policy. Any discussion?
I think we discussed this pretty much to committee of the whole. I think it's something that's taken place, but there just wasn't any written policy. So I think it's a great thing to do, obviously.
You can think it's very much needed. So, any further discussion? Roll call vote. And it's greatly appreciated.
Mark Serbrook.
Yes.
Ron Vaughn.
Yes.
Brad Newbecker.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Item 7K, Claims. We have claims for a total of $130,148.48.
I'll make a motion. I, I, I looked it over. I'll make a motion. We are. Pay the, pay the claims.
I would support that motion.
We have a motion from Commissioner Scott with support from Commissioners Serbrook to pay the bills of $130,148.48. Is there any discussion? Those who looked them over, can you discuss them briefly?
Well, some of the larger ones, well, you got hit by travelers insurance for a couple of different lawsuits. It was depressing to see that. Or veneer cost, cost or sand. How do you say that?
You can't ask that one. All the time.
Up to 11,000, almost 12 there. Maximus, which I see every year, 7,000. A couple of notes here. Of course, we approved the time, the, the time, time card system and everything. So with that and the BSNA, that's up around 20,000.
Was the road patrol mileage was 10,734. Oh, I'm sorry. The road patrol mileage was 10,000.
Yes, that's outfitting so far one car.
Holy smokes.
Yeah, that's pretty much.
Is that one of the towels?
Yes.
Is that one of the towels?
Yes. One of them. Yes.
Wow.
We did send out, we did pay for the tax bill and that'll happen in, in December. That's $8,700. And then it's just a little surprising. It is a cost of doing business, but the, the water and sewer at the jail, $6,000. Just to give you an idea what the cost of doing business is.
Is that, that's a monthly charge?
Quarterly.
Quarterly.
Okay.
Yeah. That wasn't like the last one or something. What was that? Couple of, couple of paid periods ago was 300,000. Wasn't like that, but. Just a couple of things jumped though.
Who reviewed them with you? Commissioner Serbrook?
Yeah.
Okay. Anything, Commissioner Serbrook?
He covered it.
Okay. Any questions? Roll call vote.
Ron Vaughn.
Yes.
Brad Newbecker.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Mark Serbrook.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Item 8, Unfinished Business. Commissioner Scott had something he wanted to discuss.
I got a call this afternoon from Representative Derek Rendon. And.
Herself? Personally?
Personally.
Not one of her staff.
Her personally. Really didn't. I, I didn't, I didn't go through a questionnaire to make sure with her. I'm pretty sure.
She identified herself with Derek.
Yes, 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 yes. They, as we know, the Community College Act that was passed back in 1966 is in, it is in, in the state charter. And she has talked with some other representatives there. She will not take this to action at the state level. She will not get support. She feels that she won't even get it into committee. It is a longstanding thing. It has, as far as she's concerned, it has been working for all the colleges that were affected. I asked if there was any other areas of the state that were protesting it. She was unaware of any. Basically, she's not gonna take it any further than this. It's working as far as the representative's field, it's working. And so. That's where it's at.
Did she give you any other alternatives and the? Any other ideas?
I, all I said, like I told them before, I think people just want an opportunity to question what, on the ballot. But the way it's said, perpetual, perpetual mileage.
What do you mean, a question to, to take it to a reboot again?
Yeah, yeah.
The ones, the, the militia doesn't have a sunset you're talking about, correct?
Right, right. That's, that is the one that passed in 1966 for community colleges all across the state. Wasn't just here. You know, so at that point, community colleges took advantage of it.
Did you happen to ask her what, what's happened to the community colleges that have closed?
She said that the ones that she was aware of had moved, not closed, but turned into universities. She, Northwestern, for example, she used that because she, what she attended Northwestern and Cadillac years ago and it has now turned into a state university. Is what she told. So, and I, I said, does the funding follow that? And she didn't have an answer for it.
Is that it?
I did ask her about what she thought about our resolution on the, on the extending the emergency order. Zoom meetings. She was in favor of that. As we can see, those, those other resolutions from those other counties are supporting that also. But that's it.
Thank you. Administrative Report, item nine.
Couple things to update you on. I was able to tour the day treatment facility last week. Our contractor has run into the same logistical problems that most of the country is going through right now. For instance, there was a shower fixture that was supposed to go in the building. And they've decided to scrap that because the units are several months out before even being delivered and they're ready to do drywall. So they've substituted at no additional cost to the county process where they're able to just build the shower from the ground up rather than having a unit brought in. And it will From the ground up rather than having a unit brought in, and it will continue to meet all the ADA requirements and everything that we need. Uh, but that, that was a major holdup, but, um, the studs were all up, you could definitely get a feel for what that building was gonna be like, how it was gonna operate. It's gonna be nice, uh, I know Tom was, uh, running wires for all the IT equipment, so that was all taken care of. And, uh, they're just kind of waiting on supplies, and then that'll be finished. Now, interestingly, we brought up a jail bond tonight, because at your next committee of the whole, we're gonna bring to you a proposal to. Uh, what we call refund that bond, it's financing a house. But in this case, involving our bond, it would, uh, right now, based on current interest rates, our estimate. Gross savings would be just over three hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars over the remaining life of the bond. So it's definitely worth consideration, that works out to about twenty-two thousand dollars a year, um, that we would save. And of course, this, uh, will be subject to the interest rate fluctuation, uh, this is a fairly long process, it will take about six months. If the board agrees to do this, uh, to get through all the different channels that it needs to go through, including bidding for the bond and, uh, everything that goes with that. So, interest rates could change a little bit, but, uh, the number on the, the gross savings is, uh, you know, one that you can. Uh, count on seeing, uh, something pretty close to that. Uh, last thing I wanna do is remind you, the next regular meeting is on a Tuesday, November ninth, rather than November eleventh, which is Veterans Day. So, uh, our policy says we move it to the prior Tuesday, uh, still be, uh, nine o'clock meeting, I believe, on that, uh, cycle, but different date. Right, and we'll remind you again next week.
Are you gonna provide us all the information on that bond, uh, at the committee of the whole?
Yeah, I've got quite an assortment of material for you, in fact, I'll maybe even get that posted yet tonight, so you, if you really are interested in digging into the finer details. There is a lot of detail in there about, um, how the whole bond system works. Uh, the county will have to go through a rating, uh, again, probably the last time the county went through this, is when this bond was originally left. So, uh, well, we'll go through that process, all explained in there, so you'll be able to dive in as deep as you'd like, there are, uh, I'm gonna guess, uh, upwards of a hundred pages of material.
What's the current?
Out there.
I'm sorry, do you know what the current interest rate is on it?
Uh, I do not.
That's okay.
Um, but it is in the material, because the comparison is provided, so you'll see it.
That fluctuating makes me a little nervous.
Well, right now, though, the fluctuation, uh, is such that, uh, given the patterns, if, if the interest rate went up a half a percent, it's still better than what we're paying right now. So I don't think it'll go up a half a percent, but if it did, it's still gonna be a good deal or, uh, something certainly worth your attention.
Yeah. Well, at that, if it's that rate, it cuts a whole year off the payment.
Yeah.
What's the end date on that, how many years we got left?
Oh, we only.
Twenty thirty-eight.
Two years left or something like that.
Okay, is that it, Tim?
That's it.
Item ten, elected officials and department head reports. Do you have anything, clerk? Sheriff? Taze?
Nothing.
I see you changed your party. Time.
To eleven. Eleven to one.
Okay.
Saint Joe's coming in at one to trick or treat.
Okay, I just have a fruit tray, I'll bring in a drop off. Any other department heads? I don't see any in the room, or elected officials, any on the phone? Jeff, are you still there?
Working the car.
Yep, I'm still here, but I don't have anything, just, uh, just remember, um, hopefully one of you can attend the ceremony. On the eleventh to present the, uh, resolution to, uh, Arlie. So that's the eleventh at eleven o'clock, so. Probably be there a few minutes before then.
So eleven, eleven, eleven.
Yes, I will be there, Jeff.
Got it, eleven, eleven, eleven.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Any other department heads or elected officials on the phone? Any matters from the floor?
No, I have none.
Any other commissioners with matters on the floor? Committee reports, we'll start with Commissioner Vaughn.
Uh, I met with, uh, Good Art Township, we discussed it at the committee a whole little bit, the main concern was, uh, the eight hundred megahertz radios. Um, I met with Iasko County Commissioner, um, they're, uh, gonna use some of the art money for, uh, eight hundred megahertz. System in their county, and, uh, they said they'd like to see, uh, with the mutual aid agreements, um. Possibly overmount, partnering up with them, other than that, that's about it.
Commissioner Dubecker?
I was out of town for the last couple of weeks, I haven't, uh, had any meetings, but I did have a discussion with, uh. One elected official and basically portrayed the same, uh, comments as Ron just mentioned. Hopefully pooling some of this money together with townships to. Use the money more effectively.
Commissioner Servick?
I attended, uh, EMS meeting. Carol Bowers, our university manager, wife is gonna retire after twenty-five years of faithful service, told me I'm EMS. Um, I attended a sting board meeting, I've got a copy of their audit, if anybody's curious as to, um, as their fiscal year twenty twenty, they just gotta finish it up, believe it or not. Shows how far behind the state of Michigan is, so I've got a copy of it, anybody like to take a look at it? Other than that, that's it.
Commissioner Scott?
I attended the, uh, airport meeting, we had, uh, we're going to go ahead with, uh, bidding a cloud truck out with, uh. Through my, uh. My buyer.
My deal.
My deal, that's it, my deal. And, uh, he also had an issue with our, our, our large brush hog or lawnmower. Our big, uh, three, three, uh, forty footer or something, it hit a big rock and it totally destroyed it. So, the insurance company's gonna give us twenty-four thousand dollars to replace it. Oh, it's a big lawnmower, goes behind a big tractor. And, yeah, it hit a big, big rock. And, uh, we could have bought it back and then rebuilt it, but, uh, we decided that we'll just go and get a new one. It's finding a new one, the logistics issue again, so. Since we're past, really past, uh, lawn cutting right now, and we'll have six months to find one, so. Um. Yeah, hopefully we can find a truck to my deal quicker, because the snow's gonna be here, but we'll, uh, we'll end up, uh. Going, uh. Locally bought snow pile for it. And then planning commission was last night, we approved a site plan for storage units off the two twelve exit on the south side. In Horton Township. And, uh, we had much discussion about, uh. Camping on, on properties, on tiny homes, and, um. The other. Something else, I can't remember. Oh, and then I was at the road commission meeting also, uh, this week. Uh, they reviewed some of the projects coming up and. And, uh, they thought they had a greater motor, uh, motor going bad and greater, but it appears that after some oil testing that. They feel they don't have to do that. But, uh, their audit will be coming up soon.
Anything settled down there?
Uh, yeah, as far as, uh, union negotiation, things like that, yes.
They said mention anything about Logan touch it?
No, I've got tools issue. Nothing about that.
Okay. Is that it?
Yeah, what you do.
I didn't do much, apparently, I think the only thing I've. Stop it, the only, I think the only thing I've had since our previous meeting was EDC, um, and I think Tim pretty much gave an update on, on them, they're busy, uh. Doing some planning for, um, the federal funds, they'd like to partner with the county, um. They're jumping in with townships, um, trying to do some strategic planning, um. Uh, I think that's all I have, Michigan works this Friday, and then our township start up again next week, so. Um, but I think I gave the third board. Uh, did you happen to reach out to her? Did you ever touch base with her?
She called me back too, so we're still trying to connect.
Okay. Perfect, uh, general public comment, so those same rules apply, I am not gonna reread that, you have three minutes. Um, this can be related to anything, um, you have to come up to the podium, state your name for the record. Speak only to the chairperson, stand behind the podium when speaking, limit comments to three minutes or fewer. Um, and follow the direction of the chairperson when speaking, so is there any public comment, come on up, sir, you gotta speak your, speak your name.
My name is Christian Niles, I live at eleven, eleven, Mayhew Road. I am here tonight because I was directed here by the Attorney General, Dana Nessel, who I sent a letter to, and I think I sent them all to you. Reason I'm here tonight is, uh, pertaining to the approval of the special use permit for the new life camp on Mayhew Road. Forable, uh, the approval was made September twenty-second. Um, and I also am speaking for a hundred and five people that signed a petition against this in your district. To a nonprofit, by the way, I had approximately twenty-eight days to appeal the zoning board decision in civil circuit court. I contacted within a fifty mile square ra- radius of this building, all attorneys. I could not get an attorney that would represent us until December, um, nowhere. And not all attorneys go to circuit court, so I contacted the Michigan Bar Association for a referral. Um, they did not have an attorney to represent us either, I got a hundred and five people here. I would also like to state that during the first meeting at the Ogum County Zoning Board on July twenty-eighth. One board member, Craig Scott, raised his voice in a demanding and unprofessional manner. Towards a very elderly neighbor of ours, the lady was almost in tears, she apologized five times and he kept on going. Again, this is very unprofessional, and I would expect better manners from a councilman. During the second meeting, Mr. Scott did not even pay attention to the public, nor any of our comments. Um, he continued to look down towards the board members, uh, and when the petitioner, Tim Workin, stood up, he definitely talked to him. This showed all the evidence, that did all of our residents there, and that they had no representation, sensation from our councilman, why he was there in our district, I'll never know. Uh, it appeared that Mr. Scott had his mind made up before this meeting even began, the approval should not have been passed. When, and it was tabled to go to the township, it went to the township and it was denied. And ninety-nine percent of the time, when something denied at the township, it goes to the county and they approve it. I've asked the township's attorney to please file out in circle, circuit court, I have not gotten a response from them. I did get a response from a few other people, but the Attorney General is the one that told, told me to come here, I did make a call to you, or you called me back. And I do appreciate that, um, lastly, I'd like to give you all a letter, and then I'm done.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Should have been at that maybe. That's what happened. Appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Need one or else?
I'll take one, thank you.
Can you spell your last name?
Sure, M.I.H.L.S. About thirteen hundred feet from this RV park.
I.
One of the only houses that isn't for sale right now.
Any other public comment? Come on up, ma'am. Speak your name.
My name is Jennifer Vogel, and I'm here, um, during a recent trial, the Ogum County Clerk, Brett Gildner. Was caught by the defense attorney, Mr. Ingham, and his client, reading through the defendant's notes to his attorney. Those documents would or should have fallen under the client attorney privileges. We have filed written complaint with the deputy clerk, we've also been advised by our attorney to come here. It can make you aware of the misconduct by the county clerk. Um, as taxpayers in the county, we have concerns that our elected officials are not being held to a certain standard. As some of us that are citizens have higher standards depending on our job. Are there any assurances that can be given to us that those standards have been followed, or will be followed in the future?
Give a response.
Typically, it's an appointment to engage, so no.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Elected officials are elected by the public.
Right, okay, I, like I said, we were advised by our attorney to come here and make you aware.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? In the room? Any public comment on the phone? Okay, very well, Pauline.
All right, um, I heard what Craig said, and Craig, reason you got the call today is because I called their office this morning. And gave me your phone number to hopefully get with you today, which they did, um. So what they're saying, and what she's saying is, sounds like to me that, um, she's not going any further, because her time is, I guess, she can't run anymore next year. So what has the attorney said, uh, we haven't had any feedback from the attorney. And also, the next step, where do we go from here? And do, should we be able to get with the legislator, Steve Johnson, and Lansing, and maybe he could help us out?
We, we have this on the agenda, uh, for committee of the whole, um, and we've requested Greg be part of that. Cause our last discussion, as you're aware, was, was closed session. So we're gonna request that he give us an update, uh, at the next committee of the whole meeting.
The residents, why is it in closed session, we should be able to, be able to hear what's going on. Since it's pertaining to the residents of Ogum County.
I, I'm not sure if going forward, if it has to be in closed session, I just know the previous, um, the previous meeting was. Do you recall Greg's reasoning behind the closed session?
Oh, it's attorney-client conversation.
Did you hear that, Pauline? It was attorney-client privilege is why the last meeting was going forward, I'm not sure. If it doesn't have to be, we definitely will not have it in closed session.
You know. Like I say, it's not gonna go anywhere per her, but then again, we don't give up, I mean, what's the next step that we can take? Um, I think maybe the attorney needs to get with other people, Lansing, and then take the next step. But I think this is something we should be able to put on the ballot to allow the residents to vote on.
What was the name of the gentleman that you sta- you, you cut, you cut out there?
Uh, King and Lansing?
Yeah.
Just later, Steve, his name was Johnson, I was, he's higher up, you see him a lot on TV and stuff, I thought maybe. Take it to the next step, if we're not gonna get, get anywhere, it seems like we're, we're not getting anywhere with. But I think we should be allowed to put it on the ballot to allow the residents to vote.
I agree.
Thank you. Anything else, Pauline?
Now, so the next thing is the committee as a whole. Where you're gonna talk to the attorney?
Yep, correct. Thank you. Any other public comment on the phone? Any public comment on the phone?
We make a motion to adjourn.
Good motion from Commissioner Scott with support from Commissioner Servick to adjourn, all in favor, say yes. opposed, motion carries, adjourned at six forty-nine.